That you should be able to hear just fine. But we'll come through the entire system is our CLT, Anne Cassandra, who is joining us virtually. And she's up there and sees us. They are all muted. And so as we begin going through the actual study session, I'll have them speak one at a time. I'm also running our PowerPoint tonight through our teams. And that will also be up on the screens. And then John Noor is capturing our entire meeting through Granicus. And we'll capture the screen as well as our appropriately social distance in-person people. And so, once we get going here, I'm going to talk about the actual content of our meeting. But I just kind of wanted everybody to get a feel for how we're running sound and people and presentation tonight. So with that, Siri, I will turn it over to you to start our meeting.
All right. Well, thank you all for coming and putting in the new public health practices of social distancing. To give a little update, we will also be working towards full telecommuting by next Monday for our next board meeting. So with that, tonight, we are talking about our current school closure and some of the updates of the services that are happening. And we look forward to hearing that. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it back over to Dr. Stavum.
Thank you. So we're going to do an overview tonight as far as we know at this point. We had even an update this afternoon, a statewide update from Superintendent of the Office of Public Instruction, Chris Rakedall. And as we continue to move forward, the three things that really are holding steady is, number one, food service for our students who need that service. And we've gotten some really nice emails of appreciation. And we hope to be able to continue that for quite a while. The second thing is basic childcare, which will be starting this week for healthcare providers and first responders, potentially expanding out from there. Barbara will be talking about this with her team. And the third thing is providing some basic services for supporting education in the home. And Mike will give an overview of that with his team. And then how we're kind of putting all kinds of supports in place for students who may need different things with Matt and his team, as well as some things about communication. But those are continuing to be kind of the mainstays of what school districts across the state are going to be asked to do during the duration of our school closures. Right now, our state is still operating off of the April closure of through April 24th. We know that may change. You've seen that change in other states, although one thing that I continue to kind of keep in mind, partly for my own hope factor, is that school districts end at different points all across the nation, too. Some end in early May. And we typically go through June. So we're waiting to get some more affirmation on that. Right now, we also have the going through the June 19th or 18th date. 19th is kind of that hard cutoff date. And so we are still operating on that premise. That could change, but as of right now, that is still the information that we have. And then we are continuing to receive more guidance within all of that around some of the nuances with graduation, with services to kids, and with what it really means to kind of provide that level of support that we also hope will kind of begin developing over time and probably won't look the same at the beginning as it does when we are through with the duration of this event, because we are all learning a lot along the way. And that is a good thing. So with that, I'm going to pull up through the magic of our technology. You can see all of our CLT members and their nice little faces are in the meeting. And what I'm going to do is run our PowerPoint also through this so that we have it up on our screen. What? That's because this one didn't get changed and the other one did. But we're not going to worry about that right now, because we are rolling. We had a few things with our versions. And so we are going to go with this version. So we're going to start off, and we won't tell Paul Vine that his face is the random face that got chosen to represent all of CLT. But I'm going to have cabinet members start. And then they are going to also call on their team members, who will be presenting part of this information through teams. So Barbara, I'm going to ask you to start with nutrition services. And you know, it might be easier if you come up here and speak as we run the slides, just so people can hear a little bit better than what those handhelds might allow us to do. Well, this is one that has all the slides. Hang on, we're going to go back to another version. Well, this is the one that John pulled off last. This is the one that we were working with. Right, but this is yours, right? No, they're not. So does your first slide look alike? Because this is the one that only had 12 last we looked. Hang on, we got to let it load. But it's very busy now that we are all on this system together. Okay, here's more loaded. We'll switch back and forth if we need to.
Yeah, we'll just do it that way.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll just go from here. Okay. So, thank you very much. Sorry, we're getting our slides together. So we began meal distribution. We've been working, Kevin Nelson, who is the Director of Nutrition Services with Sedexo, has been doing a fabulous job. And we were, along with Chris Brennigan, our Director of Business Services. And we did begin meal distribution last Monday. And so we are serving at six sites. And those are our base kitchens. And we are serving at Finn Hill, Inglewood, Comaiken, Redmond, Rose Hill, and Timberline Middle School. And students must be present to pick up a meal. And we are working with the OSPI to provide waivers to modify that, because we realize some families, these children may be sick, and we need to keep those children home. So the menu consists of a grab-and-go lunch and breakfast. It's packaged in a sack lunch format. We have both regular and vegetarian options. We have a different menu each day, which is posted on our website. Families can preorder the meals each morning, or the night before, or up until 8:00 the next morning. We are preparing extra meals. So if you do forget to preorder, families can still show up at those locations and pick up a meal. And they are free to any child in the community. You do not have to be attending, like Washington schools. Free to any child in the community. So we have information on our website. We are texting families once a week. We're trying to put information on school reader boards, if staff are available to do that. And we're also putting it out on Facebook. Meal pickup is available from 10:30 to noon. It is staged outside the main entrance to maximize the grab-and-go. And then we are serving a range of two to up to, on Friday, we served 1,000 meals. And so, and that includes both breakfast and lunch. So our first day, we served 100 breakfasts and almost 100 lunches. But by Friday, we had served 482 breakfasts and 489 lunches. So all together for the week, we've served a total of 3,200 meals. So, go ahead. So the other thing is beginning midweek. So we knew that last week was kind of a first step, doing our six sites. And beginning midweek, we are going to add 13 additional sites that parents can, families can pick up lunches. And we're adding 13 elementary schools. And you can see the schools listed there. Audubon, Bell, Einstein, Frost, Juanita, Keller, Kirk, Lakeview, Mead, Redmanell, Rose Hill L., Sandberg, and Twain. And so as soon as we get our website updated, families will be able to select pickup for those locations. And that does include our planned sites for childcare. And our bus drivers are beginning this week. We'll be picking up from the base kitchens at the middle school and delivering to those elementary sites. So that's all I have for nutrition services. Do you have any questions on nutrition services before I move into childcare?
I do not see any questions at this point in time. Cassandra, do you have any questions?
Thank you. All right. So next, I'll talk about our emergency childcare program. We have staff, a lot of staff, working on putting together an emergency childcare program. Sue Ann Sullivan, our Director of Elementary Education. Matt Livingston, Director of Secondary Education. Michael Andera, our Extended Day Program Supervisor. And Stacy McGrath, our Associate Director of Special Education. So they've been working to begin developing a childcare program for K-5 staff during the school closure. We're going to provide limited sites on our school campuses using our district Extended Day staff. We have an Extended Day Before and After School program in about 12 of our locations. And we'll be using those staff, along with other instructional assistants and paraeducators, to provide services at a limited number of staff. We also already have partnerships with the YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club. And so they are also offering childcare at their locations. The YMCA has childcare at their Bellevue location and their Sammamish location. And the Boys and Girls Club has childcare at their Kirkland location and at their Sammamish location. We also are providing secondary transition center students. We are serving two students who expressed interest in needing care during the day. And so we are serving those students at Basic Beginnings. So we sent out an interest survey on Friday, March 13th. And we said that the priority for care would be for healthcare workers and first responders. We closed that first round of interest survey on Monday, March 16th. We heard from 157 students that needed care, families with 157 students. 107 of those are at our Extended Day sites. And then the other 50 would be served with the Y and the Boys and Girls Club. And we've provided their contact information to them. So go ahead to the next slide. So we are planning to open, we're working toward opening childcare sites at six elementary schools. Frost, Keller, Kirk, Lakeview, Rose Hill Elementary, and Sandberg. The hours would be 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And we're developing a staffing plan. So as I mentioned, we have our Extended Day staff. And then we'll have an IA and/or paraeducator for every three to five students. We'll have one administrator onsite. And we'll have one staff person in the office to answer phones. We will also have one nurse for each location. And that nurse will conduct health and temperature checks at the start of the day and then attend to any ongoing health situations. The program, one of the challenges, of course, with developing this type of program so quickly is we need to follow all the COVID-19 guidelines. We need to provide social distancing, small groups of children, not mixing the groups. We need to develop drop-off and pickup procedures so there's no physical contact with parents. The health check protocols for children and staff. And then, of course, cleaning protocols before and after the session. So our timeline is we're working, continuing work this week. We're finalizing our staffing plan today. Then we will develop, train staff, and develop the program setup Tuesday and Wednesday. And our goal is to begin services this Thursday. So right now, we have on our website resources for pre-K students, because our programs do not serve preschool students, but they'll serve K-5. And then, once we go live with the program, we will provide contact information for both the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and our onsite childcare. So, any questions? Again, this has been a large undertaking, and our staff are doing a fabulous job at putting this together.
So one second, we'll start with Director Stewart, then Director Carlson.
Barbara, how do the kids get to the facilities, whether it's for the food, or for that matter, for the childcare? If, I know that if you're walking distance, that's one thing, but otherwise...
So it is a family needs to provide transportation to and from the daycare, just like they would in a normal situation. And then we do with our Basic Beginnings students. We are having bus drivers drive those families that need it for our special education students.
To follow up, is Basic Beginning still open to their paying, their outside clients?
I didn't hear the question. Could you repeat it?
I'm sorry. Is Basic Beginning still open to their regular clients? I mean, the non-school LWSD, if you will? Because I'm sure they have paying clients other than us.
We'll have Shannon Hitch talk about that.
All right.
Okay.
And for your emergency childcare, you had mentioned that it's first responders and medical staff.
Correct.
Is there a parameter on that that has been distributed?
Yes, when they filled out the interest survey, we let them know that priority would be healthcare and first responders. When they filled out the survey, we asked them if they were a healthcare worker, a first responder. If so, where did they work? So we have that information.
Okay.
Director Liberty, did you have any questions?
I just have a question in regards to the locations that they were at those schools for childcare. They appear to be sort of Redmond, Kirkland. I'm curious as to why not Sammamish.
Great question. So most of our schools in Sammamish are served by either the YMCA and Boys and Girls Club right now. So families in that service area that expressed interest, we forwarded their information already to the Y and the Boys and Girls Clubs. So they are contacting those families to set them up for care at their sites. So these locations follow kind of our Extended Day model.
Great. Okay. The other question is, we spoke about the healthcare providers and that. I know there's been discussion around grocery stores are an essential service, as well as pharmacy at this point in time. And so, as this expands, will we be looking at expanding those opportunities maybe into those groups as well?
We certainly can look at that. Once we get the program up and running and we see what space is available. I will say, on the interest survey, we did not receive a lot of, even the ones that said they were not healthcare workers. At the time, I did not see any that were grocery store workers or pharmacy, worked in a pharmacy. Again, that may change over time.
All right. Thank you.
And so if parents have not originally contacted you, how do they get in contact with you if they are still stuck?
So they can go to our website. Right now, it still says interest survey by, I think tomorrow or Wednesday, we'll have an email that they can contact our Extended Day program, or they can contact, and we'll have contact information for the Bellevue Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA on our website as well. So they can contact any of the three to see if there's space available.
How are they, pardon me, how are they trying to accomplish the social distancing in these settings? I'm curious. I can see a couple of them being very challenging.
Yep.
The younger the kid, or I've been around the folks at Basic Beginnings, and that's very difficult, I would think.
Yeah. So the, and the question was, how are they accomplishing the social distancing on a site? So the reason we have six sites is we are trying to keep each site limited to a smaller number of students. At this time, it's around 15 to 20 students at each site. Again, that may change over time. And then, as I mentioned, that will limit each adult to three to five students. And then those three to five students will be in separate places in the building. So they won't be all congregated together. So that's how we're so accomplishing that.
That being said, we have told people, too, we'll do this as long as we can. And that also involves that safety factor and how well people stay. And we know that some protocols might have to be followed if we have illness on those sites, too. So we're going to do our very, very best to keep a program up and running for as long as we can, for as many as we can. But we're also asking staff to assume some level of risk. And as we've had more stringent suggestions and mandates from our governor and public health, we also know that people are trying to do their best to take those seriously. So as we've said with many things during this situation, this is not typical. Typically, we would say, yes, let's all do childcare, and everybody would volunteer. And we know it doesn't feel like that. Although, I will say, people have been great to step up. Our administrators and staff were just trying to put the right people at the right sites so that we have maximum safety, along with high-quality childcare. So that's the plan for as long as we can.
Now, that question really wasn't meant to be critical. I just wanted, I figured if I'd ask it, because I can imagine some parents would want to know, too.
Yeah.
Sort of a FYI type of question.
Yep.
Cassandra, any questions?
No questions. It is difficult to hear when anyone other than Jane or you, Siri, are speaking, just to let you know.
We'll try and restate the questions. They're at the tables, and so you can't hear them as well as those of us who are up here at the DIOS mic, because it's just running through my computer. So we'll try and restate the questions.
But thank you for the feedback. That's good, in order to be able to make these meetings work. So speak as close as we can to the microphones to make sure the sound goes.
It'd be easier when we are all just in the team meeting and projecting that. Okay, thank you. Let's move on. So I'm going to ask Dr. Holman now to share just some of the basics of how we are helping people know what they're doing, where they are working from, what we are asking people to do while we're also experiencing the closures, because we also know that staff are eager to be busy and working and helping out wherever they can.
And so, when we think about essential services for a school district, we have done a pretty lengthy process to identify who has to be onsite and which staff really can work remotely. And so I just listed some of those staff that we know do need to be here onsite. Here at the central office, I put limited onsite, because there are things occurring here that can only occur with staff onsite. We have a rotation at our front desk, where there's one staff member there each day, and they're actually rotating through. So we typically have multiple staff members at the front desk. And so that's just to maintain that continuity of the front desk answering the phones, making sure we are getting our deliveries, UPS, FedEx, those types of things that we get quite a bit of. We have our Technology Operations Center here at the Resource Center. And particularly now, given the landscape of how we are relying on this in a different way than we ever have, those staff are having to come onsite. But again, we are having to think about, how do we maintain the social distance for any staff member that's coming onsite? And so that is, it's okay. We've also, it's okay. We have also identified our custodial staff as being critical to maintaining functioning of the district. I'll ask Barbara to speak about custodial and maintenance. When you think about the student learning that is continuing, our teaching corps and staff are on a daily basis, working on resources for students. They all have their different methodologies, either Power School Learning, OneNote, or via email, to be able to communicate those learning opportunities with students. Mike is going to talk at greater length about that. I spoke about our technology operations. And then one of those very key functions for the district is payroll. And we know that's a school responsibility and a central responsibility coming together to make sure that paychecks occur. Barbara, do you want to just come and talk about custodial and maintenance?
So we have our custodial personnel in each of our buildings, making sure buildings are continuing to be clean, making sure they're secure, just doing perimeter checks also to make sure nothing happened, you know, the night before. So they're on staff, working hard, cleaning. And our maintenance staff as well, our grounds crew is out, continuing. And then our, you know, all of our trades, our HVAC, our carpenters, painters, they're all out as needed, repairing buildings. This is a good time to do repairs when students are not in our buildings. So they, and doing any emergency work. And the other group that's not on here is, of course, our bus drivers. So we do have our bus drivers that are coming in to help deliver food and do essential work related to that.
And all of this comes in context of us taking the guidance from the governor, King County Executive, and public health to make sure that we are providing appropriate accommodations for our staff as well. So a couple of bullet points that we've communicated with all of our staff. When you think about work location, we really had a default work location for everyone as remote. And then we kind of worked back from there, rather than working the opposite direction, because really, the guidance we've received is, we want as few people out in the community and on job sites as possible. And so we are taking that seriously. And so that's why we started with that as the default. And it's only for really essential workers onsite, or workers that they just could not work remotely. We have a few job classifications that there isn't work for them to do outside of the job site. But again, with that second bullet point, we are doing scheduling and social distancing when staff are here. And that might mean we rotate staff through, like I talked about, the front desk. And we're doing that in all locations to make sure that there's appropriate separation. We also have identified our staff, or we've communicated with our staff that if they are in the high-risk category, that they need to notify their supervisor. And most people are able to let their supervisor know and work remotely. For those that aren't able to work remotely, then we are having them just on paid admin leave, knowing that their supervisor could call them to do a job responsibility remotely. But for the most part, they are on paid admin leave, because they are in that high-risk category. And then also, if a staff member is diagnosed with COVID, if they've been in close contact, if their doctor has quarantined them, we have the emergency health leave that affords for them to take a few days, I believe it's three days of sick leave. And then the remainder of their quarantine is paid admin leave, so that when they are ready to return to work, either remotely or onsite, they've finished their quarantine and not had to use all of their sick leave for that process. Any questions about staffing or guidance for employees?
Cassandra?
Just wanted to make sure that I think what I heard Dr. Stavum say earlier was that the staffing for childcare and some of, I guess Sedexo is doing the meals, the staffing for childcare has already been decided?
It's in process. The structure is decided. Is there something you were thinking about or a question about it?
Not really. I was just wondering if there are staff that really want to work? How that is being decided? How, who gets to work the childcare jobs is decided?
Do you have more than any?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Stay your distance.
So, it's okay. So on Friday, we sent out an email to all classified staff saying that we were working on staffing the Extended Day sites, these six sites, and asked for interest and schedule. And so based on the feedback that we've been given, we're putting together schedules right now to serve those staff. Or to serve, for those staff to serve students. Okay. And let me just add, if there are staff out there that did not get to respond to that, and they have an interest, let your supervisor know, and we'll be sure to pass that on to the program.
Okay, I'll do the same, thanks.
No other questions?
Okay, other questions?
No, but thank you for being able to really walk through all those pieces. There's a lot of them. There's a lot of them, and getting down to essential staff and doing so is an important thing in this piece and being able to keep the key services running. So thank you very much.
Yes. We're anxious to see just kind of how it goes and what the needs are and if it grows or shrinks. I mean, we, like many other districts, just don't know right now. So I'm going to move past this to Mike's learning services.
We're going to see. We may have, I may actually speak for them. We'll try putting the mic next to the device, too. Before we do dive in a little bit, I just want to provide some context for our approach to how we're providing learning services for students right now. You may recall last week, we shared with you that our teacher specialists who work here at the district office, as well as directors and our teachers and principals, have been working around the clock to get resources available to students and families. Initially, we put those up as static resources that were holding us while we worked with our teachers to get them prepared to start pushing resources out. And so those static resources are still on our website and still usable. They're things that any family can go into by grade level and pull out examples of learning activities and tasks that students can do. Then, as I mentioned last time we met, we also worked with our teachers to take advantage of our existing digital resources. So, you know, that's everything from email to OneNote to Power School to make learning resources available to families once a week. And just for the context that I was mentioning, and Jen will talk a little bit more specifically about those resources in a minute, I think there's a question out there right now of why aren't districts going entirely to distance learning? And I'd like to just share kind of an example of that continuum of learning resources to distance learning. And in fact, even some districts around the nation are doing nothing right now. We're definitely not in that boat. But we have taken a stance, as with most districts in Washington State and even in other states right now, of having optional learning resources available to families. So those are developed by teachers, made available to families. But in terms of that grading, in terms of the daily lesson planning, the instruction that often goes with that, I'd say most school districts right now are still kind of on that stage of making resources available. As we start looking to the potential of a longer closure, and this was brought up in the statewide meeting today, where we're not looking at four or five weeks now, we may be looking at six weeks or even longer, I think there is a start, an interest in starting to think about how do we move more to what's typically thought of as distance learning, where there's some level of instruction that's pushed out remotely. And when we think about distance learning, we're thinking about the teacher and the student aren't together. And so you have to think about what are the tools that are available so that you can make some connections, both in terms of putting resources online available for students to access, for teachers to have some kind of instruction and connection with students. And then even looking a little bit further down the road of, do you start to actually grade and provide feedback on those? And so in a true distance learning setting, you've got all these systems in place to do that. You've got the delivery tools, the software, whether that's Teams or a Power School Learning. You've got a way for teachers to connect with students. Sometimes that's video conferencing, sometimes that's teleconferencing. You have ways that teachers can collect the assignments from students and give students feedback on them. And you've got a way to check in, to make sure students are actually doing all of those things. In addition, in true distance learning, we're also thinking about our students with disabilities. And how do we provide the supports that they need to access this learning that's being delivered in a very different way? And so you want to be planning and preparing for that. So that's a true distance learning model that I think, as a state, we're starting to say that might be something we need to start moving more towards. At the same time, as of today, neighboring districts like Bellevue and even North Shore, Mercer Island, Seattle, still are very much in that. We have resources available to you, they're optional, we're providing them for you. We'll see, we're seeing little bits of difference in terms of how teachers are connecting with students. And that should start improving because we're expecting this afternoon, about 5:00, 5:30 today, more guidance from OSPI about exactly how do you do that? And I shouldn't say exactly because I think there's still a lot of ambiguity out there. But we're getting more specific guidance related to how do we deliver resources and learning for kids, particularly as we think about the potential of a longer closure. So more of that is coming. A thing to be really aware of is we are turning this around very quickly. So we get guidance, and then we take that information and we quickly act on it and we put it into practice. That's a very, very different model than the way we normally do things. So we really do ask for people's patience. As we take that guidance, we make sense of it, we put in plans to address it, and then we start pushing it out. And just for example, even now, with the way we're delivering things, there are issues that come up. So for example, our use of OneNote right now, there were some access issues we were kind of following along today. Normally, those are things that you test out well in advance, you get all the bugs worked out with this long ramp and this long runway. And what we're doing is we're fixing it right now, on the fly. And so just again, to reemphasize that we're moving very quickly and very rapidly. At the same time, we're trying to be very intentional about making sure that what we're providing to students is meaningful and will help them. And that's a, that's a fine line that we walk. So what we wanted to do is have a couple of our directors, Dr. Jen Rose and Dr. Shannon Hitch, share a little bit more specifics about our current approach. I'll share just a few more ideas about how we're planning to move forward, and then we can take some questions. And so I think we're going to put the mic on to the device here. And then Jen, can you go ahead and chime in on this first slide?
When I tested this, everything, just one second, Jim. When I ran this through, I think when we turn on the mics, then it turns it off of running through there because now it's running out here. So we're going to pump with that a little bit.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
Okay. I think there's been all kinds of learning around technology over the past two weeks. We're going to the next step. So I want to emphasize again, I think what Dr. Holman and what Mike was talking about, that this response to how do we support teachers to support students has been a really wonderful cross-divisional and department effort where everyone leaps in to do what needs to get done to support teachers and students. So the slide that we're looking at here is really reflecting where we are right now with teachers developing learning resources that are sent out to students. The guidance that you see there with the bullet points of review material that students may have already covered, those four bullets are almost directly verbatim from OSPI's guidance to us to date. So not to think about distance learning, but to really think about what's the frame for how do we engage students in the kinds of thinking that we want them to have? And then also really thinking about how do we want them to feel, both about learning and about how they feel being in this time and space that can be unsettling to students. So the resources that we're working with teachers to develop are just to review these pieces here. And we've been really focusing primarily on resources we already have in the system to support coherence in the experience for students and teachers. So teachers are learning some new things, but more review and more in thinking about what are the key elements of what students have covered already in the year that can be reinforced or enriched or built on at this point? An initial focus has also been really in connecting with students and families and to that idea of how do we want students to feel? We want them to really feel like they're still part of a learning community and that their teacher cares about them and that they're connected to other students and that we're continuing that connection to each other, even in this time that we're practicing social distancing. We are working as that larger team to develop additional resources that are vetted and aligned with practices teachers currently use in the classroom and really thinking about how the resources that we put out there are not shotgun approach, but are really thoughtfully aligned with learning and providing students with opportunities to go deeper or to fill in some places where they need to. Teachers have been given multiple different ways to revisit and review technology tools and resources, and lots of people who are really at the ready to drop what they're doing and make sure that teachers can access resources that they need. The feedback that we've had from teachers has actually been really lovely with, kind of come from a couple of different places. Parents have shared emails that teachers sent to them as an example of something really positive. And teachers have been sharing resources with us. And part of what our next task is, is to provide ways that teachers can share resources really easily with each other, with our district folks in the middle to help facilitate conversation around teaching and learning. So that's kind of the status of where we are now with all teachers sending out that connection and that learning to students on a weekly basis. Another element that we've been thinking about is how all students might access that learning. So if some students are taking advantage of daycare or if they are in need of technology, there's, our technology team, and I think there's an update later, has done a fantastic job of getting, working to get technology in the hands of students. But also, we've been developing K-5 learning resources that are able to be printed and available to students and families, and those will go out initially through our food distribution sites. So that's something that we're planning on having be in the hands of kids by Monday the 30th. So that's an overall summary of where we are right now. And in a few moments, I'll go back into some of the resources that, like Mike said, are currently on our website, and then some of our thoughts as we go into the next phase.
So I mentioned some of the planning that we're starting to do to think about a longer-term or a potential longer-term closure. As I mentioned, we're expecting much more significant guidance from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction this afternoon. And so that's going to be our first step, is to start working through that. At the same time, we've also been looking at neighboring states. California Department of Education is a little bit further ahead than Washington and have actually started putting out guidance around distance learning and things to think about. And so we've been looking at that. We also have tapped into some of our district partners. And so I think you know, we've been working with University of Washington, the TIE Center, and the Herring Center around inclusionary practices. And so we've asked them to start thinking, helping us to think about how do we start making online learning accessible for our students and what are some different ways we can do that? And we've been also partnering and looking at neighboring districts, and those are connected in some ways. So for example, we know Bellevue is thinking about how to use principles of universal design for learning, as they're thinking about making online resources available to students and families and making distance learning more accessible. So that'll be an important part for us to consider as well, as we think about how do we make sure that kids who are sitting at home can access distance learning and resources that are coming to them. So we're looking at guidance, we're looking at neighboring districts, we're looking at other states, and we are starting to think about if we are to start transitioning more to more of a focus from optional resources to more of our core curriculum instruction and assessment, what are some things that have to be in place? And I do, again, want to reemphasize, though, districts in Washington and even around the country, as I've been looking over the past few nights, are still very much in this optional stage. And so I think as we start to look at this crisis playing out more, there'll be some more conversation and more guidance around distance learning. So with that, I did want to have Jen just speak briefly to our work around the resources that are accessible or were accessible initially, because I think there will also be some opportunities for us to think about what can be there as a resource for families at any time, more as an on-demand type of thing, because we know that not all families are going to be available at the same time every day, and what's just a place that you can go. And also, I wanted to speak to this because it shows the significant efforts that are going on on the part of people in our district to make resources available, make them accessible, make them usable for families. And so I'll just have her share a few kind of quick words on this one.
Yeah. So this was, again, a multi-divisional, multi-department response where we came together and thought about what are the kinds of resources that parents could use at home? And like Mike was saying, to think about, they have, students are all different kinds of students. Families have a couple of kids at home, one child at home, they're in different situations, or perhaps they're working parents. So we wanted to be able to provide a diverse set of resources. And as you can see from this, these are the different buttons that we have. So parents have different places they can go to click into the resources that are there. And if you get a chance to go in, we again try to align, to use our district resources so they were something that parents and teachers and students were familiar with, but that they did provide some structure, but a ton of flexibility. So parents could drop in wherever they had opportunity and really play to the interest of their students. This was not something, we didn't want to set parents up for something that would be difficult, you know, to try to run something just like school at home was absolutely not the goal. We really wanted just to provide a variety of resources that made sense for families and furthered or deepened or supported the learning for our students. So that's what these resources were. They're fairly generalized, and they actually have been enhanced. We got them up on the website a week ago Friday, and all teams did additional work and then enhanced them and got a new version up again on Friday. And as Mike said, as we go further into this, we'll keep thinking about what kinds of supports can we put in place for families so that they have that flexible menu of things to do with their students?
In a moment, I'm going to have Dr. Shannon Hitch share more about special education. But I do want to just point out, we were just contacted even today by Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, asking if they could share the resources that this team has developed for special education with schools and districts across the state. I think you'll probably know and you'll see that all districts are in very different places. Some are further along, some aren't quite as far along. And so even just this model is more than many of the districts in Washington State have used. And so to be able to point to them, point them to examples like this is helping them move their practices along. So we want to move now to a brief conversation about providing supports for students with disabilities. And, oh, there it is, thanks. And again, before that, let me move over here. Before we go into that, I just wanted to give some, an update briefly that you may have heard. We did just receive, I think it was on Friday night, information about, okay, information on Friday night from the U.S. Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights. And that was really helpful guidance. It helped us to see that it's, they were very clear, you shouldn't not do distance learning because you're trying to figure out, or as you're trying to figure out how to support students with disabilities and make sure that learning is accessible to them. And so we've been looking at that guidance very closely to help us think about how do we continue to move our district forward and at the same time, not ignore the needs of students in our district. And so Dr. Hitch is going to share a little bit more about our approach to special education. And then after that, I'll wrap up with just some last bits of information, particularly about graduating seniors. So we'll get this up for you.
We're restarting because some of them were frozen in time. So we're going to just see if we can reshare and get them back started with us. All right, that was wrong. Let's see if that works.
While Jane moves slides, I just want to confirm that you can hear me okay? Are you all able to see now there? Yes. Yeah. Okay. You're all right? So just like you said, we've been looking at piano, but it's a little steeped in. We received national guidance from the Office of Civil Rights, the Department of Education, and the Office of Special Education Programs, as well as information from OSPI. And what it really comes down to is that the core tenet is that as special, as general education goes, special education goes. They are the same road and must be comparable. And so if you're offering general education services, you must offer special education services. If you're providing learning enrichment activities for general education, you're providing learning enrichment activities for special education. So they must be comparable. They have been pretty clear that we have to maintain certain compliance requirements. And so teams will be moving forward this spring with annual IEP meetings, triennial reevaluations, 504 plan reviews, as well as our birth-to-three transitions. And our staff right now are trying to figure out how to do some of those pieces remotely and from file reviews and other data they have on students so they can get the most accurate information that they can to accomplish those tasks. We are looking at how we modify special education and really recognizing that our high school seniors are kids that we have to focus on. And so what does specially-designed instruction look like for those seniors? How are we ensuring they're meeting their graduation requirements? Those are important issues that we're navigating right now, as well as how are we able to move forward with modifying specially-designed instruction for our high-need students? So some of our kids are going to need more support than others. And so what does that support look like in an online learning platform? And then finally, we're collaborating with our general education colleagues in order to help them around accommodations and supports for kids who are in special education or have 504 plans. So for example, today, I was in a meeting with our teachers of the deaf and with our teachers of the blind and visually impaired students of the district, really ensuring that any of the resources or guidance being provided by general education teachers or special education teachers was going to be accessible for those students, as well as for our kids that might need assistive technology or those types of tools, ensuring that those kids have access to those tools and equipment as they need it. Moving on, we really want to emphasize that special hand over hand with, or therapists might be doing active therapy and helping kids move and things like that, we have to be aware of that staff and students issue that are then going to impact how that special education service might need to look a little bit different for students. And so, you know, an example would be, it's fairly relatively straightforward to offer perhaps teletherapy for speech therapy. It's much harder to think about how do you support a child with physical therapy needs, right? So some of those questions are what we're wrestling with right now. We need to recognize that equity is a crucial factor as we consider how to support students, so ensuring that kids have access to the technology, access to the equipment they need, access to the expertise of the teachers, and not just access to the online learning, but actually having the ability to engage in the online learning. Those are considerations that we have to look at. Ultimately, IEPs are going to continue to drive our work with students, and we know that there's going to need to be a consideration around how we're meeting the needs of our students individually by their IEPs, also recognizing that we've got about 3,500 students in special education. So, that's a volume issue that we have to address as well. So, as we look at some of the current efforts that we have going forward, we have some pretty remarkable and robust online learning resources, and we've broken them down into elementary, secondary, and preschool, and we've further broken them down by program. And so, there are different resources for students that might be accessing resource from programs versus kids accessing preschool programming versus kids that might be in a more contained learning program. And there's some pretty wonderful things in there for families, especially for our high-needs students, things like picture schedules and helping with transitions and helping students understand what this issue is that we're facing as a nation. And they're also specific to some of our programs such as our intervention centers and our non-public agency schools, which are our private schools that we contract with. We've got kids out of state right now that we are working with, their families and their providers, and we have kids in-state that we're trying to work with as well. One of our focus areas is on mental health support for our students. We have some very vulnerable students who need that contact with their mental health provider, and so we're working collaboratively with student services as well as with our own district staff to ensure that those kids are having that contact throughout this school closure period. We're doing a lot of communication between case managers and families, but there's also district-level communications that we will send out as things are updated or addressed by any of the entities that are providing us with guidance. One of the cool things that we are putting into place is we have some contractual board-certified behavior analysts that support students and programs in our district, and it's our intention to set up basically an opportunity for families that need support to be able to call in and have FaceTime or phone time with a BCBA to help them support their child in the home. So some of our kids and our families need a lot of support with behavior and other kinds of management issues in the home, and those BCBA supports are going to be made available to families, even if those services are not on a child's IEP. So we're going to be putting that into place hopefully by the end of this week. We've got professional learning, both addressing our certificated and our classified staff. It's a tremendous opportunity because a number of entities are providing free training opportunities. So, there is an autism program out of the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill that's got some tremendous resources, the Council for Exceptional Children. Those are some wonderful opportunities that are coming that we want to make sure that we take advantage of. We're supporting our childcare students. We've got some secondary transition center students at Basic Beginnings that we'll be supporting, as well as kids in our other elementary childcare programs. And then we are doing our ongoing work that's being maintained, the inclusionary practice work that we're engaging with the TIE Center, as well as UDL and implementation and training from CAST and other inclusionary projects that we have going on. So those continue in the background as we're navigating these different moving pieces right now.
Thanks, Shannon. As I mentioned, there was one other area that we're spending quite a bit of time on right now, I just wanted to share with you briefly. So you may have heard that we have some guidance that will be coming around how to support students to ensure that they're graduating, and the commitment on Lake Washington's part, as well as at the state level, is to ensure students graduate. We don't want this crisis to be a factor that keeps a kid from graduating. In fact, there's a commitment to make sure that that doesn't happen. As you can imagine, there are lots of questions that need to be answered, and we're starting to work through those right now. That's everything from students that were basically paused in March, and what do you do with their grades moving forward? How do you apply credit when students aren't here in school? You know there's testing requirements that have been waived, but they were opened up for seniors who maybe didn't meet standard on SBA, on the Smarter Balanced Assessment in English Language Arts or Math. So there's a question about, well, we have some of our seniors taking that test, and if school doesn't reopen, what's the plan there? Thinking about things like what's called an expedited waiver process that allows students who do things like enroll or get accepted to a college, being able to not have to do all of the requirements for graduation. We're wrestling with things like what do you do with grades that are just sitting in a gradebook waiting to have some additional assignments added? And then, what do we do for those kids who are passing a class and maybe don't come back? And so do we think about online learning for them? Do we think about if they do come back, where do we start, where do we end? In addition, there are other factors for high school SAT and ACT exams. We're monitoring just to see what the plans are for that. Our dual credit courses, Running Start and UW in the High School has provided some guidance, credit recovery in summer school. So these are all things that folks at the district office and in our schools are attending to right now as we try to make sure that kids are getting what they need in our high schools. And in particular, right now, there's a real strong emphasis on focusing on your seniors to start to make sure they're queuing up okay for graduation. That's going to be, in some ways, things we can mechanize, so we can pull data on numbers of kids who are at certain points in their educational journey. In other places, it's going through student by student and actually seeing where are there still needs, and then having a plan for that student to address those needs. So, a student who failed a sophomore-level class that was going to be taking or is currently enrolled in a credit recovery, what's the plan for that student? Or a student who is currently enrolled in civics, so that's a one semester high school senior graduation requirement, what do we do there? So you can see each of those requires some level of attention and detail to monitor. So that's happening right now. We're meeting with our principals this Wednesday to start working through some of these issues. Tim Krieger's been pulling data and starting to go through the guidance to identify some different strategies, and as I mentioned earlier, we keep saying this, but it's an important part of the work, is we're looking at additional guidance that's coming from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction, just about what are some things that are allowable for seniors, what are some strategies that we should be thinking about? In addition, the State Board of Education will be doing some work around potential waivers, but we were told this evening that we should not be thinking about waiving graduation requirements as the first go-to approach. We really need to be thinking about ensuring that students are getting opportunities to demonstrate that they have met proficiency or met standard in these courses. So, a lot of things happening in a lot of different venues, and again, this goes back to, our people are working at this at full capacity and more, and on a lot of different fronts. And so that's something to keep in mind as we think about this need to be very quick and this urgency that we're feeling, and that's important, and making sure we're doing things well. And so, I'd say we probably have a little bit more of the urgency side now than we've ever had in the past. At the same time, we don't want to go down a road like has happened in some districts and have to pull things back because we haven't waited a day or two to follow guidance and internalize that guidance. And so, we are really walking that line right now, and that's creating some angst in the system that you're all aware of. But it is in our benefit when we know we have a couple of days to read something and manage it and learn about it and do it well, it's worth our time to do that rather than just jumping ahead of the guidance that we're receiving, and know that that guidance is changing pretty frequently, too. So we're constantly kind of making sure we're staying up on that. So that's the, those are the slides for, yep.
I'm going to pause just for a second and check our chat. Oops. Where is it? There we go.
Cassandra, you have a question.
I do. Two quick questions. A little farther back, we talked about hard packets being brought to meal pickup locations for students to access. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. How would a student who doesn't come to get lunch access a hard packet if they wanted one, or how would they know that it was an option?
Question is about options for hard copy packets.
Correct.
So, what we're looking at, right, we're planning to have weekly packets' worth of work that students could pick up. It doesn't necessarily have to be a student in need, it could be any student. Right now, we're using some data around the number of students who are accessing meals, so that's around 200 or so as a starting point, but our thinking is we could have more than that at each school site. So a family that wanted to could say, I just need to come in and get a packet and do a pickup that way. So it wouldn't be you have to check some standard or some quality. So, yeah, maybe just a preference. So, we will be sending communication out to all of our families. We will also be targeting families that are coming in, so there'll be information as families are coming in to pick up meals so that they know about that as well. We want to see what kind of interest we have in that first week, so we know if we need to scale up or if we need to put our people's efforts into some other areas. In addition, at the secondary level, just because we have so many content areas, we're starting to think about what would be reasonable for a content area teacher to develop and then either send out digitally or send to a print center that could be put into a school site that could be picked up. And then ultimately, as we think about the potential of maybe moving resources out into our community, which is down the road a ways potentially, if we're delivering meals to certain areas, could we also have packets that are delivered? So, again, this is all good work and the right work, and we should absolutely be doing it, but these systems take time and resources and people to figure out. And so, our first effort is what we think we can accomplish is actually having resources ready to go by Monday, having people know that they're available for pickup, see what kind of interest we have, and then scale up or scale down, and then look at different ways and mechanisms to deliver them.
Okay, so it will be communicated at some point so other parents know?
Yeah, the question is, will it be communicated so families know? And yes.
Okay, and then, the other question I had was, since parents are part of the IEP team, have we asked them or surveyed them to see what it is they need at home for their child to be successful?
So I'll have, Shannon, can you weigh in on that one, please?
Yes, absolutely. And so, in general, what we have happening right now is our special education teachers for our learning center programs and for our transition center programs and our intervention center programs, those teachers have been in communication with their families, and it's something that we are encouraging and asking them to do, so that they can touch base and make sure that kids are doing okay and families have the resources that they need. Again, it's a volume issue, it's the number of kids that we have to work through, the number of families, the changes that we're navigating, all at the same time, that we have to bear in mind and consider. But there's pretty tight-knit relationships between special ed teachers oftentimes and their families, and so I know that that relationship is going to be something that families rely upon during this period of school closure.
Thank you. I think in most cases, you're absolutely right, there's a very tight connection between family and teacher. I have a student in a transition classroom, and we haven't, we haven't been asked, when the emails come to us as parents, what we might need or what support. So, I mention that just as maybe there should be messaging, if that is the message you want, eventually communicated to parents. We've gotten some great resources, though.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and absolutely, our parents are our partners in this process, and I know that some parents have reached out to me already with resources and connections. This is definitely a time in which we're finding that the community is a very strong one here in Lake Washington, and people are really sharing with one another tremendously. So, we'll continue to seek out parent input and guidance, and it sounds like perhaps something a little bit more structured may be helpful as we move forward.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Other questions? Director Carlson.
So, I apologize because I have not telegraphed this, there have been many things going on, but I am frustrated because what we've just talked about are very important groups, but Jen mostly spoke to K5, and then Shannon was mostly speaking to special services. And we glossed over students who are at risk of not graduating. There is a very real urgency in getting our AP classes back online, and it's not to make the AP exam. It's because a one-year AP class is typically one semester of preliminary school in college. If we don't finish the semester on that curriculum, those students will have to retake the class when they get to college. That is a failure on our part if we don't prepare them for college. And so, this week, I've got children taking too many AP exams, too many AP classes, and I've gotten at least half a dozen emails from AP teachers saying, "We've heard from the district that we're not allowed to do office hours. We've heard from the district that we're not allowed to do videos. We've heard from the district..." I appreciate that this is a very complicated situation, and I appreciate that the rest of the states, the rest of the country is sort of in the same limbo, but we, damn it, are the home of Microsoft. If anybody can solve this, it should be us, and we should be the leaders on this. So what I would very much like to know is, is OSPI actually telling us, "You can't educate any of your AP classes if you can't do kindergarten online"? That seems to be the message that we're getting.
Not at all. And I think, you know, the Department of Education's guidance was helpful in that matter. There was some concern about when you provide education to students, you need to make sure that you're providing education to all, and you need to be thinking through how do you make that education accessible to all? So that's not only students with disabilities, it's students who speak a language other than English as their primary language, it's students who maybe lack resources and need supports. So, there was some work, and this is across the country, and as I mentioned, I was looking at district after district, including some that had very specific language around how are we going to make things accessible, and until we can figure that out, we're providing optional learning resources. So that's been, and I hear what you're saying, that's been an approach across the country, so what are we doing to take a leadership stance on it?
AP has not yet.
No, exactly. So, Advanced Placement and College Board has also been kind of, you know, behind a little bit in terms of what they can do. What they're sharing right now, and I'll have Becky Katamis share a little bit more in detail, is they are looking at, can we make sure that kids have access to potentially an online assessment, so they can at least take the test and demonstrate that they have met the requirements for AP? I hear what you're saying, though, that there's learning in that interim time that we need to be thinking about. We do have resources that are specifically aligned at Advanced Placement that kids have access to, but what I'm hearing is a strong interest in the instruction. And so that is, as I was sharing earlier, our task across all of our content areas, not just special education, not just elementary, but how do we start thinking about instruction if we are going to be closed for the rest of the year? And I think we do have the resources and the infrastructure, and remember, that requires training. So just for example, today, I was mentioning a teacher had some resources on OneNote in Microsoft Country. We know how to use Microsoft OneNote, our parents know how to use it, and we were still just kind of working through how to even get it turned on for that family. So, there are technical things that we have to think about when we're doing distance learning as well, but I do think it's a next stage. I think Becky Katamis can speak more specifically to Advanced Placement and College Board, and she's on here, and then we can...
Actually, before we go there, let me rephrase this.
And I think we do have the resources and the infrastructure. And remember, that requires training. So just for example, today, I was mentioning a teacher had some resources on OneNote in Microsoft Country. We know how to use Microsoft OneNote, our parents know how to use it, and we were still just kind of working through how to even get it turned on for that family. So there are technical things that we have to think about when we're doing distance learning as well. But I do think it's a next stage. I think Becky Katemus can speak more specifically to Advanced Placement College Board and she's on here and then we can.
Actually, before we go there, let me rephrase this. Are we going to have to wait to deploy online learning for every student until the last student has been solved?
No.
Because our AP computer science teachers are ready to do this.
There's a few different things, and one we're going to talk about next week at our regular board meeting because there are also mutually agreed upon working conditions right now. And that is a collaborative approach, so it's not just the district saying, do or don't do these things. It's collaborative around, how do we expect teachers to function in this different kind of environment?
Sorry, but I've got teachers saying, I want to do this and no one will let me. And if the district is the ones telling them that, I'm trying to tell the district, if I'm part of your boss, that we need to stop telling them to not teach. It's mine that has the feedback, sorry.
Because it's controlled by one of those and the other ones, yeah. So it's not just the district, the district is still giving guidance that's mutually agreed upon. But we know that some are ready to zoom forward, others are saying, please don't make me zoom forward, and some are kind of somewhere in the middle. And so we've been waiting on AP guidance, that's one thing. We've been waiting on what are the parameters by which we are all agreed upon, teachers are going to operate. What does that look like initially? But one of the fallacies that I think is out there that was out early on, which has been shaped by now, is that unless you can do something for everyone, you can't do anything for anyone. And that's not true. So now it's, how do we move forward? And if it's teams, that might be one of the tools, but that has just been deployed for adults just this year in our district. So now doing that from adult to student, we have to have some safeguards around that before we can just kind of open the doors. Because we also don't want to create unsafe conditions for teachers interacting with kids, or kids interacting with kids, or teachers interacting with one, two, group, whatever that looks like. So we're putting some parameters around that, we're waiting for the next layer of guidance. But it's very much, yes, we need to get to a certain point, particularly for those high school students with credit, with AP and with those finishables, I would call them. And so I know people have been anxious to know, what is that? And so it's lots of pieces coming together. I think AP guidance just came out like yesterday or Friday. They've been slow to the party.
And that's the thing, the AP guidance that they came from College Board is not the guidance that you actually need, is the guidance, they're going to do an AP test that's just the first half of the year. If I'm a college professor, I'm not going to accept that AP credit for you getting out of the first semester.
Which is why.
If you didn't do half of my semester.
Yep. I just said today to our statewide meeting in OSPI is that we also need higher ed chiming in on this, saying, what does that look like on their receiving side, knowing that they have a whole bunch of kids in the same boat with this? We have to have them also assuring our families and our students that they didn't just, you know, ruin their collegiate future because of an unfinished AP course or...
It's not ruining it, it's making it inefficient that appalls me.
Yeah, I know. Us too. All of this makes us all a little impatient. So we're moving in the right direction, but it's going to be, it's not just this to this, it's got to be some of this and meeting us partway along the way there to reassure families.
Yeah.
And I'm sure they'd love to hear from you as a parent.
Yeah.
Okay, let's keep...
I would like to have Becky just briefly share a little bit of an update on some of the resources and tools that our AP teachers have available. Becky, can you chime in on that just briefly?
Of course. Hi, everybody. So AP came out with their latest guidance on Friday and my department has been on daily calls with them trying to press to get additional information and questions answered. They have adjusted the test as you mentioned. It will cover material through March, beginning of March. They are also looking at moving to remote testing. There is a lot of questions regarding how that will look for students and there's some equity questions also being posed to College Board. They are saying that we will have more guidance on the remote testing experience by April 3rd. They are definitely not out in front trying to lead the way on this. They are reacting just like unfortunately we are seeing with them. They also, we are also having parents that are now questioning if they can get refunds, if they can cancel their tests and College Board just decided that they will allow cancellation with no cancellation fee, which will be good. We have families that have multiple tests out there and the cancellation fee is $40 per exam.
Yeah.
And then finally, we do have quite a few resources on the AP Central, which both teachers and students have access to, where they are able to go in and assign formative assessments for students to do on a regular basis. AP, our College Board is working to create online daily lessons starting in the beginning of April. And we are working, I've already raised the flag with them about the fact that the platform they will be hosting these lessons on is YouTube, which is a platform that we block in Lake Washington due to student privacy and also safety. So they are aware of that and I'm hoping we can find a workaround for that. In addition, families and students can go into Khan Academy and several of our AP courses are provided online there so they can continue to do practice or move forward with those courses.
So thanks, Becky. I mean, my problem isn't so much the guidance that's been given by College Board. College Board is giving people the, well, you can still get a five on this exam. I'm really worried as a higher profession, higher education person, if you come into me and you tell me, I got an AP Bio 5 on the exam, but it didn't cover Mendelian genetics, I am not letting you skip AP Bio 101. Just fundamentally, you have missed a core piece of foundation that's required. And I think the AP, the College Board doesn't appreciate that this is making their exams. Sure, there's still a way to rank kids in terms of getting into college, but that makes them invalid if we can't get the kids through the full curriculum. And that's a big deal. It's, and, sorry, I really don't care about the exam. I care about helping these kids move forward and they haven't gotten the time.
You can share your concerns with and the more they hear, the more likely they are to respond.
The irony is, I don't give a hoot if they respond. This is about us getting whatever is in the way of finishing the AP curriculum in our schools out of the way. What the AP, what the College Board does is immaterial to me, is that these kids are allowed to move forward.
They are also what helps us move some people forward.
That would be true, but I'm, at the moment, I think there are lawyers in the way, not College Board and somewhere, and I don't know quite where. I'm trying to figure out where they are so I can start banging on the right doors to explain what they've done wrong. Thank you.
If I can just add to that was, it's the piece to make sure, and this is across the board and all of these things I think of, what is that timeline to expect to hear things? How do you get clear expectations coming across all our schools and teachers so that it is clear that our students are able to access information? And why can't a teacher provide resource and office hours for people to be able to contact them and ask questions directly? That would be an equity piece in some regards. We speak a lot about access and digital access and for those families who don't, there's one component. For those who don't have somebody in their household who can support them, that's another one. And so our staff have that capacity. And how do we ensure those barriers are removed for our students to be able to do so? I think that's really a piece of your underlying question. And recognize that it is a system and there's issues. At the same time, that urgency you mentioned, that's the other piece that's pushing this.
We have to go one piece at a time and the urgency factor is coming along with the clarity factor, but we also have to have mutual agreement, knowing that working conditions have changed. And that's where we are trying to navigate, what does that look like over a span of time? And also having some grace, knowing that many of our teachers are now home with their families. And so this isn't, you know, them kind of just sitting and waiting to do lessons with our kids, which makes it really tricky. We're trying to focus in on what would be exactly instructional time and then what is kind of, I'm available time while we're doing planning with that. And I think as we get those parameters more clear, then we have clarity about, okay, now how do we fill that in with what we expect people to do? We're all feeling some level of frustration, be it one version or another. And so we're trying, like Mike said, to go slow and steady, to get in the right direction. And I know there's urgency around that, particularly for people who are ready to go and want to know and access that. We're making the first step out this week with asking teachers to now start to make direct contact, start to put things purposefully in the hands of students and families, start to direct work there. And from there, we hope that that evolves to, okay, now we're ready to kind of get back to, okay, we're going to actually do a class now and get this instruction. But that's not just one person making that decision, that's many people. And whenever it's many people coming together around those kinds of decisions, it's not fast and it's not easy. So we have to bear with it.
So make it faster.
Yeah, I know. Okay, can we keep going from here? More questions?
I have one more question in regards to the resources and the different components. One is K-4, we are, do not have a one-to-one distribution with K-4 kids. So how are those families being able to access online resources and being able to address that? So that would be one. Two, are we tracking any information in regards to who's getting online, who's not? How do we know who's ac, so we can find where some of those barriers might be? Because often those barriers won't necessarily be told to us. We're going to have to see where those gaps are.
Yep. Sally and her team, which John will hobble up here and tell you more about, they've been doing really extensive work to make sure that people have what they need. There are some hiccups just with international supply change, chains that have impacted that a little bit, but I'll let John talk about that.
Yeah, but for the immediate, we have put a request on our website out to any family that has a need around a laptop or a hotspot to, maybe they don't have access to the internet at their house. And so to date, we have received, and don't hold me to these numbers, I believe it's around 700 elementary students and it's increasing every day requesting a laptop. And we've had over 600 district students request a hotspot. We were able to secure 500 hotspots, kind of as all of this was unfolding. And so we are getting those into the hands of families so that they have direct access to what all of their peers are experiencing. There are a few different free internet resources right now being offered. And so as we continue to look for additional hotspots to procure, we are trying to direct people to where there's community access as well. And so we're working on both of those fronts. Our schools have done a tremendous job of figuring out for their context, how do we get these into the hands of families and making sure that kids have access? And so we, we're continuing to work through all of that and get, get all of those devices out.
We also think there were some confusion points early on with hotspots and people thinking that you needed a hotspot to do some of the things that we were putting online with just kind of confusion. And helping people understand, no, you just need internet access and this hotspot doesn't do some magical thing with your learning or it isn't holding like the actual curriculum or something. So I think there's a little bit of that too, as we're trying to translate out what you really need to do, work or to access things online. Other questions?
At some point, it'd be nice to sort of get an idea as to where we're at in that coverage as you go through this, as we look at it and sort of the data piece behind sort of what's happening to give, because there's a lot of process right now and it's not clear how that's equitably being put out there. So the more we can start tracking that in time, that'd be benefit. Recognize there's a lot and just getting things done is important. There's also the, how effectively are we succeeding?
Yeah, we'll hope Sally's got all her hair still left, she's not pulling it out. She and her team have done a marvelous job of just pushing things out as fast as possible. So we appreciate those folks.
And props where props are due, that's an incredible rollout on the hotspots.
Yeah, it's very fast.
I'm very impressed on the ability to pull that together, so.
Yeah.
But I do appreciate the update.
Yeah, and part of this is, as we roll it out too, it's being able to get it back or to, to keep our resources and our assets in, you know, condition that we know where they are. And so it's, how do you do that quickly so that we also know where we have those things to be able to use them in our normal circumstances when we resume regular kinds of services so that then we have them to be accessed in different ways too? Lots of, lots of work. Question?
I believe Director Stewart has a question.
I think the numbers are very impressive. My question is, I know we have a whole lot more kids in K through 5 than those several hundred, and I applaud the fact we've been able to get to several hundred already and the hotspots too that are needed. But do we have any indication that we're going to, that's going to be doubling or tripling?
I think we know they're growing, but I also know that other people are chipping in and some neighborhoods and PTSAs and, and schools are kind of hearing from people and exchanging resources. And I think it needs to be those things as well. You know, if you have a laptop that was somebody's and they don't use it much anymore and you want to loan it to another family, I think that's a great thing to do. Sally is on here. Sally, do you want to chime in at all?
Sure. I couldn't hear the question, but I think that we have computers in the hands of all the elementary families that needed a device. Right now, the resources they're accessing don't require special filtering or direct access into our network. And we have received a lot of people wanting to donate a variety of different equipment. The challenge would be that we in the tech department would have no idea what the experience would be for the families and many of these donated pieces of equipment are lacking things like operating systems, power cords, monitors. And so it would just, I think, add to the workload and not turn out to be a beneficial experience for the families.
Yeah, it's walking that line of how can those be made available friend to friend as opposed to having to be kind of image procured, cleaned up, fixed up by the district while we're just trying to deploy those basic resources and services? It's a great role for our community partners.
It would be interesting to ask parents, I think at some point, those of you who didn't receive materials from us or machines from us, if you will, how many of you were able to access it either through PTSA, a good friend, a neighbor, just so we could get a feel for how much the community actually rallied together? And in case, God forbid, this ever happens again, we'd know that that worked once.
Yeah. Mark is saying to those of you online that it would be good to just kind of do an after-action debrief of how people procured resources that they needed. If they didn't get something necessarily from the school district, where were they able to find that for future reference? So we'll add that to our emergency action team because I think there will be a lot of those things when we recover from this that we'll want to go back and look at lessons learned. And that would be one of them. Good point. Okay, I'm looking at our time at 5:28 and thinking we probably need to move on to Mr. Gillingham and then we'll still hopefully have time for some questions as we wrap up. And we'll need to wrap up just a few minutes before 6 o'clock so we can then get things done on our computer side so that we're ready to go for that meeting.
Okay. Well, I'll keep this a bit brief. What I wanted to share tonight was an update on where we're at with providing behavioral health, mental health supports for students. I think it's, you know, one of the things that we're coming to realize is that, you know, not only do our students rely on us for educational services, but they rely on us for community and they rely on us for relationships. And a week or two into this, you know, being pulled away from your community and pulled away from your relationships is pretty significant. And, and so since we're not able to provide that quite, quite in the moment, just want to talk about how we've expanded, kind of what we think about our Tier 2 or Tier 3 supports in a remote setting. I may have Johnny Foo, our Director of Student Services, join us here in a second to provide a little bit more detail because he really has worked with our school counselors and our behavioral health specialists to rethink about how we can provide services for students when we can't physically meet with them. And so Evergreen Health has, is at our comprehensive high schools and they've pivoted pretty quickly to being able to provide a remote access. They have virtual waiting rooms for our students that they can access. They can access them online. And they're continuing, they're working, they can also work directly with, with their school counselors. They're also expanding that to support students and families as well and connect those families with, with resources. Continuing to focus on brief solution interventions and... And they're also following up with students that they were working with previously. At our middle schools and Choice High Schools, YES is continuing to follow up with students that they were working with before. And counselors are able to provide ongoing referrals to those services. Our school counselors are, as we're gearing back up, Johnny's been meeting with them all last week to talk about how we continue to provide families with resources and connect with students. And they're continuing their collaboration and meeting regularly with their behavioral health specialists to be checking in on students to see how they're doing. I imagine that this will evolve over time, and kind of as Mike talked about with academic services, will evolve and will keep adding layers on. But for now, our ability to continue to provide some services to our students when they're not with us is a pretty important step. So, I'm going to ask Johnny if he has anything additional to add.
Matt, you covered it, all of it, most of it. And I just wanted to quickly recognize really our community partners and school counselors to how quickly they were able to come together and be able to really get this lifted off the ground. There was a really quick turnaround in which we met with the various stakeholders in a matter of, you know, 48 hours and was able to come up with a plan. And we continue to develop those plans over time as we roll it out. But as of Friday, Evergreen Health has been able to launch the Doxy Me link. And then, at our middle schools, they were able to launch today. One of the things that I want to just reiterate is that, you know, it's continuing to support students who need it. And also, we know that, we know that students and families are going to face different barriers during this closure. And so, still being a resource in which they connect with their school counselor, and their school counselor would be making a referral to our community partners. And so, I'm really proud and just want to recognize that partnership was able to, be able to come together in a quick, short amount of time to be able to identify and then come up with structures to support potentially new students that come to us during this closure. And so, I really appreciate YES and Evergreen Health and our school counselors.
I think one of the other things that I'll just add on top of this is that as we start to look at recovery and at the point in time in which we resume, kind of, we resume school, that team will also be looking intensively at how do we start backup in such a way that really recognizes the social, emotional impact that this is having on our children? And, you know, there's that sense of loss that I think we're all feeling. And I know for, you know, particularly our teenagers, I can say for my teenagers, feeling this in a way that my elementary student is not. And so, that'll be something that will, as we kind of initially gear up, what does this new service look like? We're also going to be starting to look ahead to say, well, what does it look like when we return at whatever point in time so that we're attending to the needs of our students?
No, I just want to congratulate all the community partners that are working, and your staff, working together on this, because as you just said, it's not just the students who are already in the system, but this tension and disarray, if you will, is probably going to add to the number of students you had there, at least temporarily. So, the more we can help, the greater.
We appreciate all those partners because we know that their load looks different now. And when you think about the ways that you typically address mental health supports, it's in-person and a caring environment and in a way that, you know, is private and feels comforting. And we are not able to do many of the things that we would normally do in the ways that are comforting just to human beings. And so, just having access is good. And I think one of the biggest things that we need to reiterate to our families and our students is this is not a fast, quick thing that we're going to experience here and that we all need to just relax and do the things that we can do. And the things that we can't right now, it's okay because it's not going to last forever. And if there are some things that we can provide a reasonable substitute, we know we have questions about prom. And what about graduation? And what about my spring music concert? And this thing I've been working on for four years as a capstone project that I wanted to present? And there are so many of those things. And I do trust the creativity of our staff, that as we kind of get used to this new normal, people are going to have some great ideas. You already see them emerging on social media. You see people with, you know, things that happened right before closures where everybody like threw together a graduation. And we'll be able to figure out some things, even if it means, you know, one student coming across the stage, you know, with nobody else in the gyms. We'll figure that out. Because what we want to honor is that this is, this is not like any other experience. There is no class existing right now that's had to have their version of what this class is. You know, whether you're a second grader and you kind of remember this weird thing and you knew something happened, but you don't really know what, and now that you're studying about this in high school, you get it. Or you're a high school senior or junior and you remember that year that, you know, you were, you already had bought your prom dress and it was going to be the most magical thing ever, and you didn't get to do that. My own niece had just gotten her prom dress, and then they closed. She did get to play in state basketball, but it's hard. And I think that human side of this is, the loss is very real. And just when Matt said that, I felt it in my own chest, because I think we feel that and all of us collectively in our school district feel the real disappointment that's out there, because this is so different in so many ways. So, we want to be sensitive to the human being side of all of this for everybody, because we're all feeling that pain of what we're having to kind of substitute now. Yes?
As ideas crop up with the parent community, I know you've got a very easy way to do it through the teachers who come up with their ideas. Should we perhaps be looking at setting up a different email address or rather than just the one, so they can segment that?
We'll put it, I think, once we kind of get rolling here, we already have just a COVID button. I don't think anybody wants to see that after a certain period of time in Let's Talk. But I think we can have a Share Your Ideas kind of a button. That's still the best place to direct people to, because that's what is familiar and easily accessible. But I think we can change the options, so if you have a great idea to share, please do. We've gotten some with scheduling, and when we come back, what if we did this, you know, for social distancing? And so, they're out there. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, especially considering all the IT people we have in our group.
Yeah, well, and people want to help. And that's a great thing, because people are already thinking ahead to, well, how do we, how do we come back out of this into normalcy? New normalcy? Yeah. Other questions?
I actually just want to say thank you for making sure we think about all sides of the equations with our students and the experience that it's going through, that it's not just the academic and educational, but it does include the mental health and emotional well-being of our students and being sure we can provide that additional service. So, appreciate that thoughtfulness, of really thinking holistically and stepping forward into that. So, just wanted to call that out.
Yeah, and the combination of services that may be needed, as you tell your teenager no and you need behavioral supports because they are rebelling, because they want to go to their friend's house, which is a natural thing that our kids want to do. And then we say, nope, that's not an option. And then you have the whole loss piece. So it's a very unique combination. Mark?
Quick question. I know it's not many, but we do have a number of them. Our homeless student population, how are we making it as available of an educational facility as possible? Because they really don't have a place to do their studying. They don't have a spot. I'm assuming that a lot of electronic learning, yes, they may have the equipment already, but yet, have we thought about them and how we can deal with them and help them?
If they don't have a good place?
Yeah, if they don't have, I mean, those are in the shelters.
Yeah.
That may be a very difficult way to try and study, online, offline, whatever, to be quite frank.
What I know our teachers are doing, the question for those online, is what are we doing to just kind of help people, given what environment they may find themselves trying to go through this experience? And that, you know, you heard my frustration early on is, you know, we kind of paint this same picture that we assume is true for every child, and it's not. And we know that that looks different if you have one brother or sister, or if you have eight or nine in your home. And it could be way more fun, but it could be way more loud and chaotic. But that looks different. It looks different if your parent or your guardian is still having to go to work, or if they are staying home to work, and can be equally frustrating. And so, there's just so many variables to think about. And it's, oops, somebody's not muted. Mute? Oh, to have the mute button of the world. But it's also thinking about how do you coach? And that's where our teachers and our administrators come in. As they begin doing regular things, it's, you know, it's what we teach with PBIS that we want people to do at home. Routines and procedures are helpful to every child, no matter how old they are. Having a place, even if it's not a, you know, wonderful, magical tucked-away corner with your blankie and your stuffed animal, it's a place at the table that you can leave your things set up. Or it's a place where you know you're going to go and you're going to do your work, and then maybe somebody else uses that space and you take your things over, so it's safe. You know, I know for a young lady that I mentored for a number of years, for a period of time, she had younger nieces and nephews living in the same one-bedroom apartment, and her laptop screen got broken because a toddler walked over it when she set it down while doing her math to go get something to drink. And that wasn't her fault, that wasn't the toddler's fault, that was just the reality of living in close quarters with lots of people and still trying to do your work. And so, that's why we have to be aware of all of those needs and help people, coach, provide the resources, provide the ideas. And then we trust our families, because they know their children the best, they love their children, are going to do their very best. And while they're in our care, we control a set of circumstances. And while they're in the care of their families, they control those sets of circumstances. And I know that they will do their very best for their children. So, all of us can work together to help with tips and ideas and sharing and, you know, I was talking to my niece online this weekend and said, all right, I'm telling you, the electric company classic will teach your child to read by the time, you know, this whole thing is over. And it's just saying, hey, you know, WikiStix and, you know, ways to make letters with your children. And just giving people a hope factor is another thing. And you see that on Pinterest, you see it on Facebook, on Instagram. People are really coming together and teacher moms and dads who are out there are helping their friends, are like, all right, here's how you do a schedule, and here's how you set up that spot. So it's really been fun to see how people step up and really try and help with that. I think that's what worries all of us, is just not knowing the end date. And then how do we all cope with what that looks like in our own environment? So we're going to give grace and help and hope to keep moving forward. Great, great points. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from our online team? This is pretty cool, isn't it? We're going to make it. I still don't know why the sound won't run through here from this, because it did on Friday when I tried it out, but that's okay. If you see, we actually have 22 more people. If I, let me see if I can get here to where you can see everybody. If I show participants. I'm going to stop presenting, and then maybe you can see everybody. Nope, you just see them across the bottom here, over on this side. There we go. And I have been, my max Teams meeting has been about 165-ish. When we have our DLT meetings, we're now doing those on Teams, we're doing CLT meetings on here. We meet with other Teams in other places. It's usually Zoom or Teams, but we find that this is helpful, because then we also have a record of the questions that were asked during a meeting, and we can go back and look at those and kind of capture those in our Q and A's and all of the ways that this has been a helpful tool. And we're very thankful for our Microsoft partnership. People wonder why we didn't just, you know, flip and do Teams on a dime. It's because it is new, but we are moving forward with it. And thankfully, we had deployed it to the level that we had this year, otherwise we would have been a major step behind. And when we think about how much we're using this right now, we're very thankful, even though some might have wondered about it initially, people are very happy to have this as a tool. And we get great support on the technology side and the security side from our partners at Microsoft as well. Okay, well, Siri, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any follow-up questions, comments that they'd like to make on the coronavirus update? How'd that work? Was that helpful? On the update you just got?
Oh, sorry, I've gotten about a dozen different coronavirus updates in different contexts in the last 24 hours, so I'm a little bit...
On school closure currently and where we are at within Lake Washington and the different steps and process that's going forward. The only question we didn't hear anything about was communication piece. And I know that's a component, is thinking about sort of the, there's lots of things, and we hear, you know, that will come in time. Sometimes if there's a, some type of a, you know, by in two weeks, we expect to have an update too, or in one week, we expect to provide an update. I know that can sort of help to, so what is the communication expectations, I guess, that our community or we should expect?
The next layer of communications, we really want to start coming out from our schools. And so, that's going to be principals and teachers with some periodic district updates. One of the next district things that will come out from schools is about staying out of playgrounds, and I think the governor just helped us with that as of about 5:30. So, what we want it to feel like is your school is talking to you, unless there are some big things that come out from us. This week is teachers getting started on pushing out those things. Like Mike said, we have guidance, we think that is still coming from OSPI, although I think we're about at a point where we're going to do what we're going to do as a district and keep moving forward. So, we'll talk next Monday night, kind of about the collaborative agreements that exist right now and where we hope those evolve to in terms of the level of service. And I think by then, people will have also gotten used to what it feels like to be working remotely and what we have for kind of added capacity over time, if not for the sheer fact that people are going to get bored and want more to do in some way. So, the training and the learning, the professional development that's going to be happening, all of those things are contributing to how we're going to attend to our students and what begins to run more smoothly as we do it more often. The paper copy things, we'll get a better line on that, that'll go out very soon. And so, I think we're in fairly good shape. So I would say, after we talk next week, you'll have a better idea of the evolution of service. But that's something that we still have to have as an agreed-upon collaborative joint agreement with our employee groups as well. So, we're also kind of looking at what is the statewide picture of this? And we've asked for some continuity with what's kind of a message to all, and we're still kind of getting that message district by district. And so, there will be some conversations, I think, that will continue to take place around that. But I don't know that I can put a hard and fast deadline on it, but what we want most of all right now is for things to begin transitioning back to a school level of communication that comes out more frequently. We just were talking this morning about what do we do for internal updates and how often do we send things out for people to read, and how often do we convene people in online meetings? And that's been pretty well-established now. And then it's some of the other meetings that people do in departments or that John does with level directors and with principals. And we still have some processes that have to continue in preparation for next year that'll be different now, but we still have a budget to attend to. We still have hiring. There were people in the building today spaced far apart, hiring a principal for Inglewood, Inglewood Middle School. And, thank you. And we still have, you know, a few more of those to go. Emily and Pat and Jared and Bill in HR have done a fabulous job of thinking about how do we continue to hire teachers remotely and are doing interviews in a new way. So, we have regular business to attend to as well as the kind of the current business at hand just with this situation. So, more to come, as frequently as possible. And the building being the purveyor of the biggest messages to families with consistency across all of our schools is the next goal.
Thank you.
Are we done?
I think we're almost done, but next Monday, if we have to, if we get a shelter-in-place order, we're going to do this as a distance meeting.
So in regards from the board perspective, so what we've been talking about is, so we've put up some changes in which we are live streaming and videotaping our study session right now. So people do not have to attend to be able to see what happens at this. We've put that notification up. As well as our regular board meetings, we do have public comment typically. And with that, we are not going to be taking oral public comment at that point, but you can email or call in that. The number is actually online on our website. And that will be put into the board's meeting. You can always email the board directly and don't have to wait to a time for public comment. However you are interested in that, we can ensure that it gets through that way. For next week, our goal is to actually telecommute everybody. So that Cassandra was our first run today. Thank you. And then as well as staff to see how it works. And then our goal will be that all board members will then be Teams in and we will hold our meeting that way on Monday. So we'll be working through this week to sort of test that out with everybody to make sure all of us can do that. And then we will still be taping that, similar to what's happening here. So there'll still be, we, as part of the Open Publics Meetings Act, you are still required to have a physical location where people can come to and hear the actual meeting. They don't have to see it. They have to be able to hear it. I don't think we've updated the Open Publics Meetings Act based on current technology and things, but that's currently where it's at. So this room will likely still be available because we'll have to have somebody here in which to tape and run it that way, in which to do the live streaming. So this is the location that that will be in, although we will all be remote at that point in time.
So the audience wouldn't be on Teams? The audience is in Granicus or?
Yes, there'd be the button on the page that they would click and would allow them to live stream through Granicus as we have all the time. We won't be changing that so that they don't have to deal with a new app or a new service.
But just, just to clarify, I think what this will look like is John Noor, if he's, if he can be here, all of you, except for me, will be up there and we'll do it live. The other thing that we could do, if we don't have staff available, we said, we'll do this as long as we have staff available, is we've put up on the website new procedures. So send in your questions, send in your comments early. Those will be read by me or Siri at the meeting will get those. So that will still be aired, if you will. Worst-case scenario is John can't be here or he is ill. I don't know that very many people know how to run the show if John's not available, so we might have to cross-train this week. But worst-case scenario is I'm here, but if we are all on Teams together, which I will be in that team meeting with you, we record that and then the team meeting is just posted. And so it may not be live streamed, but it will still be the full meeting that can be posted shortly after the meeting, still with public comments coming in the same way that they will anyway. So that's worst-case. John and I will try our best to be here next Monday. I'll try it out with all of you ahead of time and get you up to speed with your technology. And then it'll just be me in the screen. That'll be a little weird.
So again, flexibility and graciousness will be needed as we work through this. So any sort of feedback in regards to taping and sound and that things would actually be appreciated as well to make sure that it's working. We'll all watch the video at some point to make sure. And so we can hopefully finesse those issues and make this better each time that we do it. This will be the idea to continue going forward until this school closure has come to an end and we are not required to be doing social distancing. I'm not sure everybody's able to hear that because you are not on mic, but I can repeat it. Mike Van Norden was just coming. Governor Inslee has a press conference at 5:30. And our understanding is that the stay-at-home order has come through that. And so we will be in the process of making that happen. All right. Well, with that, I'm going to go ahead and end our study session. And then we will be beginning our board meeting at 6 o'clock in five minutes. Thank you.